Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees for the School Town of Speedway March 12, 2024 meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight we'll be operating from a 12-item agenda, the first of which is to approve the minutes of our February 13 meeting.
I'll move that we approve the minutes from the February 13, 2024 meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving the minutes indicate by raising your hand. The next item is to approve the early literacy achievement grant.
Thank you, Madam President. The Indiana Department of Education issued guidance related to an early literacy achievement grant in 2023 from House Enrolled Act 1001. This appropriation was made to provide funding to schools for supplemental payment stipends to teachers for improving students' foundation reading skills and evidenced by I read three data. Through this appropriation, grant funds have been issued to public school corporations such as Speedway Schools and other charter schools for distribution to teachers, instructional coaches, and other school staff responsible for implementation and delivery of literacy and reading instruction through grades three as supplemental payment stipends. The recommendation is to approve this grant and distribute the amount to the individuals. It's actually by March 29. There's a resolution in your packet. Double check something there.
That's correct.
Yeah, it is correct. So the notes are wrong on that. That needs to be distributed by March. So we're planning on distributing this at the end of this month to our teachers, instructional coaches, and paras. There was criteria from the DOE which we followed, which is in the resolution. I think it's a great thing to, at any time that we get this money, I wish it was more, but we'll have a list of people that you can see in your packet that will get a little bonus money for those teachers and educators that have been working with their third graders. So the recommendation is to approve this resolution.
I'll move that we approve the resolution to pay early literacy grant stipends.
I'll second.
Wonderful. Any discussion on this? Okay. Do we have the official one to sign or sign the one in here?
Go ahead and sign this one. Board President and Secretary.
Thank you very much to those teachers. I think he said, you know, it's a great opportunity to be able to especially recognize those instructional folks.
Did we vote?
Do we vote? Do we now vote?
You can now vote.
Oh, wow. It's gonna be this kind of night. Let's vote. Y'all keep me on track. All in favor of that we already signed. Good thing. Yeah, of approving the early literacy achievement grant indicate by raising your hand. And that passes. Thank goodness.
Nancy Johnson and the central office staff, as you guys know, were pretty light up there, but this adds another whole layer that we weren't expecting. So when the DOE does it, we appreciate that and we love giving money to the teachers or getting them to them, but we had a lot of people work on this too, from Andrea McIntosh, our principals, John Disney, Nancy Johnson, her team. So there's a lot of people to thank. Every time something's like a quick vote that goes through here, there's a lot of people behind the scenes that make this happen. So I just want to say thank you to all of them.
Thank you. Thank you for the thank you. So the third item on our agenda is to present the 2425 Student Parent Handbook.
In your packet is a copy of the 2324 Student Parent Handbook. In other words, last year's handbook. And inside that handbook is, are any updates, corrections. They're in blue in your handbook. Most of the corrections, updates are dates, name changes of personnel that have left or leaving, calendar, those kinds of things that are updated yearly. I put in your packet the only thing of substance in the handbook that has changed this year so that everybody is aware of that. And it's actually on page 10. It starts on page 10 in your handbook. And the reason why that's in there is because on page 10, it lists an item called textbook assistance, and we don't do textbooks anymore. So we added to change that. And so textbook assistance, which described how textbooks were charged for and so on, now it's financial assistance for students. And it says that under Indiana Code 2033-5-3, the parent of a child of a remancipated minor enrolled in a public school in grades K-12 who meets certain financial eligibility standards may apply for financial assistance for curriculum materials and lunches. Specific information regarding free or reduced lunches is available from the building principal. This form should be completed prior to the start of the school year or within 30 days of the student's enrollment date. One of the reasons why that's in there is there was a free lunch situation a few years ago, and there was a confusion about textbooks, charging for textbooks and lunches. So hopefully this clarifies that the textbooks are free, but the lunches are still something that would be charged for. The second item in there of substance actually is in your copies on page 11, but it'll eventually be on page 10 when we reformat this. And it talks about curriculum materials and paper fees. And what we thought was important in this area, because we don't charge for that anymore, is that curriculum materials, it's important to say that those are selected by local officials and shall be provided at no cost to each student enrolled in Speedway Schools. And curriculum materials provided to the students remain the property of the school corporation. So if we issue the curriculum materials, it is the property of the school corporation. Therefore, if it's lost or damaged, the family will be responsible for those things that are issued. Also that consumable fees such as paper fees are not included in state assistance. So we could charge for those. We did not last year. There was no charge for families for those. That allows us to do that in the future if we need to. And the third and last substantial change in the handbook is on page 13 in your book. It's gonna be on page 12 when we reformat. And that is for the first time ever, we gave the I read three test to second graders. Second graders in the state of Indiana were allowed to start participating in the I read three test. Two years ago, we opted to wait to see how that was going to work. This year, our second graders either have taken or are currently taking the I read three test. And so it says that students in grades two will participate in I read three in the spring. A student that passes I read three as a second grader has proven reading proficiency and will not need to take I read three as a third grader. Students in grade three, unless they have passed at grade two, are required to take I read three in the spring, and then I read three retesting is scheduled during the summer. There'll be no retest for second graders. It's not in there, but I want to make that, because the purpose of it is just to find out if you're on track or if you meet the standards of passing. So those are the only substantial changes in the handbook. And you can see the changes, the editorial changes, updates in blue. So this is a situation where we've, in the past, we've brought it to this meeting, and then in the next meeting, we'll make recommendation for it to be approved, if that's what you choose to do. I do know that the legislative session just ended last Friday, so there could be some updates that take place. It usually takes a while for all that stuff to come out, and those updates will be.
Who, thank you. Who, so do the second graders take I read just as a matter of course? It's not part of the second grade curriculum to prepare them for I read? I mean, is there any? Is that now having to move into the second grade curriculum to get them ready to take it?
It's a great question. The answer to that question is no. The second grade standards and the curriculum is the same as it has been. So if a student takes the I read three test as a second grader, they've proven that they have proficiency, but we have not changed our standards to do that. And like I said, we waited two years to do this. It's a local decision whether you did it or not, and we waited to see how everybody else was doing with it. Typical of what we do. We don't want to be the front runner on most of that stuff. Let's see what mistakes are made or what positives occur. And we found out from our principals, went around, talked to each one of them, and we're getting results back. And they say, what's great about this now is if it's a student is, they get three things. They either passed it or they're on track. There isn't a such thing as you're failing or at risk. So if they're on track, great. If they're at risk, now we can pinpoint who those a year ahead of time before they take it again. So everybody that's participated in it so far seems to think, that's a pretty good idea of us finding out where our kids, where our kids are on the reading spectrum. So.
What happens with the kids that have passed that are sitting in third grade while the rest of the class is preparing for this, yet they've passed it?
That was a million dollar question, what we do with those. And the answer to that question, we haven't been there yet. So we just had second graders do that first time this year. But the thought process is going to be, when we get to the testing thing, we're gonna have to do something separate with those students, and we don't exactly know what that is. We're not gonna send them home. We're gonna keep them at school, but I can't tell you what that it's gonna be when we do that testing. Usually the I read three test takes a couple of days to do. When I say a couple of days, it takes a couple of days of an hour or two a day to get that done. So it's a great problem to have. Well, I hope we have a whole bunch of them that have passed and already met the criteria for what reading standards should be.
That's great.
John, is there any advantage in, since there's these changes we have here, and the rest of them are all cosmetic changes of changing names and so on and so forth, is there any advantage of approving this with the caveat that if the state says something, we would add it? I mean, is there any advantage in approving it tonight versus waiting? Does that give them a jump start at all, or is that, there's no advantage of doing something tonight?
That's up to the board's pleasure, what they want to do. I can tell you, I don't know of a reason why we wouldn't hold off to do that. If you want to do that, that's fine with me. I mean, there's nothing that I'm waiting for the next meeting for that to happen.
We can start the formatting. We'd be a month ahead.
I had the same thought. There's nothing controversial here that we need a month to think about. Why not just go ahead and approve it tonight?
That would be my preference. I mean, if that provides an advantage, fine. If it doesn't, fine. It'd be different if we had 52 changes in here, but we don't. Basically the same as last year with the ones you just went over.
I can make the recommendation then that we approve it with the necessary changes from the new legislation that comes out that were brought to your attention if it's substantial.
I'll make a motion that we approve the handbook for next year with the caveat that if there are changes occurred due to state legislature and new laws, they be changed. But I'll recommend we approve it.
I'll second.
Is there discussion? Yes, from my standpoint, it would only be that those things that do, you know, require being changed are brought back for.
Absolutely.
At least, you know, our knowledge, if not our approval, if it's something that seems like it would require it.
And I think we should allow editorial changes, because as you format it.
Of course.
Split paragraphs or whatever, you need to be able to fix that. That's no problem.
Yeah. Okay. I think we'll vote on this one. What do you guys say?
Let's do it.
Yeah, let's do it. So all in favor of passing, of approving the 2425 Student Parent Handbook indicate by raising your hand. And that passes 4-0. Great. The fourth item on our agenda is to approve the, an extended field trip.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'd like to apologize to the soccer program, because I was going to say they've won the ICC conference four years in a row. And as I'm reading through this, my apology, they've won five straight ICC champions and three sectional championships. This is a routine matter that we've been bringing for the last, I don't know, three to four years. They do a summer camp, and it's a field trip extension for our soccer team. My recommendation is to approve this request. Just let people know that we have, I think, well over 20-plus kids that go to this summer camp. The team itself is much larger than that, but our coaching staff and our team have been doing this for the last few years, and I think it's just phenomenal that they're able to go team building. They go to Anderson University for a few days in the summer, and our results for the soccer program has been phenomenal. So with saying that, I recommend that we approve this extended field trip for our soccer team.
I'll make a motion that we approve the extended field trip for the soccer team.
I'll second.
Great. Any discussion on this? Okay. All in favor of approving the extended field trip for the soccer team indicate by raising your hand. And that passes 4-0. The next item is the presentation of the 2526, 2627, and 2728, so the next three school years calendars.
Thank you, Madam President. The 2425 school year is already approved up on the website. This is for the succeeding three years, as you stated, 2526, 2627, 2728 school years. The drafts are based upon the following factors that we've been using since I've been here. And the Speedway students will attend 183 days each year. That is three days longer than required by state. That's how we've done it, and we've always done it. Speedway students will not attend school in June or July. Again, that's students, student days. Carburation Day is important. On the next page of the notes, other factors that we've always considered, my first few years, in 2014, 15, we had a balanced calendar. So we had two weeks fall break, two weeks spring break, and we've adjusted since then. So we've always had factors considered with a week-long fall break, Thanksgiving break, the spring break with the wraparound days, winter break in December. So those are all the factors that we've been talking about for two months with staff and administration, trying to get to where people feel comfortable. The one thing we know on this board that no matter what you do and however long the meetings are, it usually ends up 33%, 33%, 33% of happiness. So whatever we have, we believe that you put a calendar out far enough, which isn't next year, it's the year after that, and you let people plan around that. Since COVID, our attendance rates have changed. Things are a little different nowadays, where parents have been pulling kids when needed, and we've been always, we want kids in school, make no mistake about it. But there's some flexibility with that. So after all the collaboration, we have found 33% of people happy with this. And just know, I'm here all the time, so it doesn't. So here's a result of collaboration for these three-year calendars. A full week vacation for fall break, Thanksgiving, and spring break, a full week. The rapid days of spring break will go away. They will be extended in the Christmas break during those times. We heard enough from teachers and other people that our Christmas breaks are a little short in Speedway. So we're extending the time of Christmas break for one and all. Also, for the school year 26, 27, 27, 28, we try to get out before the race. There's a weird year next year and the year after, but the teacher's contract will end before the race weekend, which is new, for two of these three years. And then the final thing that I want to take note, and we're gonna publish this on the website tomorrow morning so everybody can see, for two years from now, right, two, three, four. Professional Development Day in February, this was, many teachers really liked this move, and administrators to have an extra day at the beginning of the school year, which would have our teachers have, and our eyes, administration, that we have a lot of meetings we have to get through nowadays, and that would give an extra day for teachers in their classroom and preparing for the school year. So those are some of the changes that you can see in your packets. Again, the input was gathered with administration and Speedway Classroom Teachers Association. Even though this is not a discussable item, we still do that. We talk, we listen, we try to make a place where people can have a voice there on this. And both groups, again, there's not a counter that's gonna make everybody happy, but I believe this is a pretty good one after going through this multiple times to get to this. My recommendation is to approve this.
The agenda says present. Are we approving?
That's my presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, let's go ahead and approve it.
I'll move that we approve the calendar years 25, 26, 26, 27, 27, 28 calendars as presented.
I approve. Or I second, sorry. We're on it.
Any discussion on this? And again, it is, we really believe that it's important that you, the public, have the calendar out there well in advance, and so this gets it out there. So we've got the next four years of calendars on the website, so all kinds of plans can be made. That's wonderful.
And I also think it's important that we included administrators. It wasn't decided by superintendent, assistant superintendent, and teachers group, teachers association as well, so all of them had some input into what it was too.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor of approving those three years worth of calendars indicate by raising your hand? Okay. And that passes 4-0. The sixth item on the agenda is to present the facility update.
Thank you, Madam President. The junior high cafeteria, we're getting quotes for that right now, to upgrade the junior high stairway, the walls, some things downstairs, bring it up to speed with some technology and a few graphics, like we did the high school. If you went to the Speedway Lions Club breakfast, you'll, you'll notice I had a lot of good comments of how the high school looks a lot better from where it is. So we're doing a piece of that. The junior high was a little better spot than the high school, so that's gonna be an upgrade. The high school, we're still waiting on new cafeteria chairs and tables. It's been sitting there for many, many months, and just to let you know, we're still on that. I was hoping to have it done before the breakfast, but it wasn't there quite, so that's coming. The swimming pool is something I want to bring to everyone's attention. It is a, not a new swimming pool by any way near that, but there's new starting blocks. And just appreciate the athletic department, the boosters, and the school corporation upgrading the starting blocks. They wobbled a little, jumping off, and as we all know, that's probably needed to be updated. The timing system is on its last leg. We're planning on upgrading that and a paint job in the cafeteria, or in the swimming pool, excuse me. As you notice, we're just taking small chunks of that with our capital asset plan we talked about every year, that we have a plan for that. We keep trying to upgrade our massive facilities for that. Next month, we're planning on bringing in Schmidt Architects along with Stair Associates to give another further depth, understanding of some of our facilities and what the needs are to move forward for not just the next couple of years, but three years, five years, 10-year plan. Hopefully, we'll have a nice presentation for that regarding basically our capital, capital improvement plan that we'll be moving towards soon. So that includes boilers, includes roofs, windows, parking lots, athletic facilities, and upgrades in addition. So I'm excited about that, to kind of let people know the direction we're gonna go there. And that is, no vote needed. That's just your facility update.
Thank you. The next item is an acknowledgement of $267,173.73 in grants received over the last month. So that is, that is great. There's some nice, yeah. We appreciate the several donations to the athletic fund especially. That's awesome. The eighth item is personnel report.
Several items for your consideration on this month's personnel report. The following resignations are resignations. Chandra Daly as custodian. Madonna Edgman as the Wheeler Elementary Manager in the cafeteria. Jeremy Noren as Speedway High School English teacher. Eric Roseborough as assistant track coach at Speedway Junior High School. Gage Norris as the head wrestling coach at Speedway Junior High School. And Christine Clampett as elementary teacher. She was at Allison Elementary. The following individuals are recommended for employment. Yohani Espina Pereira is a four-hour cafeteria worker at Speedway High School. Scott Morrow is a boys assistant golf coach at Speedway High School. Eric Roseborough is the director of facilities. Evan Hansen is assistant track coach at Speedway Junior High School. Stevie Flum is assistant track coach at Speedway Junior High School. Tina Wright is a cafeteria manager at Wheeler Elementary. And Lisa Simmons is the cafeteria manager at Newby Elementary. My recommendation is you approve the personnel report as presented.
I move we approve the personnel report as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving the personnel report as presented indicate by raising your hand? And that passes 4-0. Do we have any other business?
I do. At our last meeting, a mental health was mentioned as in the public comments, so I just wanted to share some, a briefing of what's going on inside our school district. I end up meeting with the person that was here that made public comments, and when we left, she was very appreciative of the fact that we had met, but I want the public to know some things we're doing in terms of mental health inside our school system. We have homeschool advisors or school counselors in every building. Most of our homeschool advisors have mental health provider background or experiences when we hire them. And these individuals provide support in many ways and per building, and they do it in ways like class-wide social, emotional lessons, bullying prevention lessons, which is mandated by law, that's done in all six of our buildings, small group skills, teaching for students. And example that would be anger management, grief, social skills, those kinds of things. There are also individual support groups, like daily or weekly check-ins that are, that take place with these counselors, partnering with student families, tier-two behavior plans, et cetera. These individuals are also instrumental in connecting students with families for additional resources or basic needs for mental health. We maintain a list of additional providers and we share with families when those needs come up. We have a partnership with Cummins Mental Health. That may be something not everyone knows. It provides a school-based mental health in every one of our schools. Every one of our schools has a Cummins Mental Health person there. We make referrals to Cummins, and the students can receive counseling services while they're at school. And sometimes they do it at school, and they also can receive services outside of school. All staff members go through training every year. One of those training is suicide prevention, and we do that annually. And part of that training is we are trained in. And part of that training is we are trained in, in recognizing indicators of self-harm. When those things happen, obviously, we, we notify parents of that. And we have a variety of trainings that support our students and staff with mental health that are building specific. For example, our district behavior consultant has gone around to buildings that are in need, and homeschool advisors are leading training series on trauma-informed practices in those particular buildings. I want to finish with it. We are, in Speedway, we are consistently talking about the importance of building relationships, and we're proud of how we make that a priority at all of our levels. We feel like the better we know our students, the more we can figure out what's going on with them and support them with their mental health. And as good as we are, and all these things we mentioned, we're still finding ways to improve and refine our supports for our kids. So I want to let our public know what we're doing in terms of mental health, so that if there was concern from last meeting, they would be advised.
And Mr. Disney, if, if there were a parent who thinks there might be a mental health issue with their child, should, how should they go about that? Is that something they should call the administrator in the building about, or you directly, or what do you recommend to do?
Building principal would be the, definitely the person to contact. If they contact the building principal, they would probably hook them up with the, either the homeschool advisor or counselor, or the Cummins Mental Health, who's, you know, they're trained in that type of, of services. So yes, contact the building principal would be the best place. They contacted me, that's what I'd tell them to do, is contact your building principal.
I would also assume that, that they could have those conversations, to some extent, with a classroom teacher who's involved in those program, you know, that, the programs and, and the referrals and, but, but if that's not appropriate, then the building principal.
That is the way the majority of the referrals come, is through, you know, a teacher recognizes something, or something is brought to the teacher's attention, and they would make some type of first contact, maybe with the parent, letting parent know that they recognize something that is, the child may be in need. So that's step one.
That's, again, one of the, the, just major hands-on benefits of our small class sizes.
Sure. There's, that's one I wanted to make sure everybody understood, that we're so small, we know our kids so well. We can tell you which house they came from, apartment complex they, they live in, where they, you know, what they ate at night. We know those things. And that's an advantage of being small, so when you see something that's not right, our teachers are trained, let us know that, so that we can try to help them with it.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, very important. Thank you.
And with that?
I've, I guess two more things. They're quick, I promise. The Scholarship for Speedway Committee and students raised $39,387, which is a new record for a scholarship for Speedway. I'd just like to thank the committee and the students for their time and dedication on this. This money rolls right back to our students. So $39,000 over two days of phone calls. There's a lot of people that put a lot of work in before, during, and after this, so we get a lot of envelopes through our office that we, we put them to Ms. Neal. So I appreciate everybody, community, alumni, what a great job, $39,000. And also, I want to like to say, our high school musical is doing the High School Musical, I guess, is that, is that right? The High School Musical is the High School Musical. And that is March 15th, and today is?
12th.
The 12th. So it is Friday and Saturday. I have the times in front of me. 6:30 PM on Friday, and then March 16th is bonus day. You can do a matinee at 2:00 PM, or the evening show at 6:30. So kids five and under are free. I'm sure they love to come see High School Musical, and that's located in Jordan Auditorium. Tickets are $10. So what, great fun entertainment for the town of Speedway on Friday and Saturday. That is all. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks. We'll turn to sign times.
Thank you.